Good evening and welcome to Lebanon City Council, Tuesday, October 22, 2019. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Here.
Mr. Ayler.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Shoup.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Can I get a motion to excuse Mr. Deary and Mayor Brewer?
So much.
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor. Thank you. Please stand with us for the invocation of the pledge.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this another beautiful day in this wonderful community. What a great blessing it is to be a resident here, to be a servant here. We're thankful for the opportunity to lead and guide and pray that you would give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding to make good decisions on behalf of our community. We're thankful for all that came out this evening. We pray that you would be with our first responders in our city, those that protect us, firemen, police officers, others that work so hard to make this such a wonderful city to be a part of. We're so very thankful. Be with our military all around the world to protect our freedoms, be with their families. We pray these things in Jesus' name and for His sake. Amen.
Pledge blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please consider work session minutes for October 1st and a motion to approve those?
Motion, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Also, consideration of meeting minutes, October 8th. Can I get a motion to approve those?
And motion, Your Honor?
Second.
You mean to have a roll call for the October 1st? Yeah, my bad. I moved through that too quickly.
So for October 1st?
Yeah, October 1st. Can I get a roll call, please, Mr. Burke?
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
And for October 8th, please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Thank you for everyone who is joining us here this evening. We're going to go ahead and open this up for a public hearing concerning the zoning map amendment at 511 North Broadway and 525 North Broadway and--
So we'd need a motion to open a public hearing for a zoning map amendment at 511 North Broadway, 525 North Broadway Avenue and part of 501 North Water Street. Is that a motion?
Motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any objection to opening the public hearing? Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
Chief Mitchell.
The public hearing is now in session.
Okay, thank you. So the zoning map amendment and PUD concept plan is 511 North Broadway, 525 North Broadway and part of 501 North Water Street from R1C Residential 1 to NC Neighborhood Commercial and PO Professional Office to MUPUD Mixed Use Planned Unit Development. Parcel numbers you can see on the screen there are approximately 8.75 acres. You also see our-- the applicant, Mr. Jim Cohen, and the property address. The requested action, review and provide recommendations to City Council on the proposed map amendment and concept plan. So our next slide is the area designated as the amendment site. Then our next slide would be-- this is the proposed schematic for 511 North Broadway. This is the current plan here. This next slide is a-- potentially an alternative plan. The slide indicates this is alternative plan number one, which is a slight change in the parking configuration from the original.
And this includes 525 North Broadway, whereas the other one was just 511 North Broadway and 501.
Assuming the sale of the property?
Yes, thank you. And then this next slide is the alternative, the second alternative. And again, you see the phase one, two, and three of the project.
And this is mainly if the property is sold after the development begins. So that's why that building is separated there.
Here we have the rendering of the construction of the buildings, kind of the townhome elevations and the apartment elevations as well. And again, this is a rendering of the project at its conclusion. So the recommendation here, based on the findings, Staff and Planning Commission finds the zoning map amendment to rezone the 8.75 acres at 511 North Broadway, 525 North Broadway and part of 501 North Water Street, Lebanon, Ohio, to the indicated parcel numbers from R1C Residential 1C, NC Neighborhood Commercial and PO Professional Office to MUPUD Mixed Use Planned Unit Development fulfills the approval criteria provided in Chapter 1132.05 and 1133.14D of the Lebanon Zoning Code and is consistent with the general goals and policy objectives of the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan and therefore recommends the City Council provide a favorable approval.
Very good. Thank you. I'd like to open it up for any comments or questions, concerns from Lebanon citizens.
Sir, if you'd like to speak on the matter, just please, first, come on. No, I don't mean to stop. Just state your name and your address for the record so that we can--
My name is Bill Brooks and I live at 28 Oakwood on the corner of Water and Oakwood Street.
Okay.
And I was not-- I did not understand the traffic pattern that is going to be-- I know it's on Broadway and there's going to be entrance and exit on Broadway, but as far as off of Water Street, is there going to be an egress from this project there? Is that what is proposed?
That's an excellent question, sir, but I'm not sure I have the answer for you tonight. Jeff, do you? We have a fill-in. Mr. Chief Mitchell is standing in for the city manager.
Maybe you go back to the drawings. You should be able to see the--
Mr. Cohen is here.
Yeah, I was going to get to--
There is a exit back here, but it's gated. So the only people that would have access to that are people who live there. It's not intended that the commercial traffic is going to have any exit through there. It's just a second exit to egress.
For those who are residents.
When you say gated, what do you mean by gated?
There'll be a gate with an access card. So in order to use that gate, you have to use an access card in order to get through it.
Okay, well, we have all the bus traffic right now that comes out of the bus compound by my house, okay? So I just don't want any more traffic, but--
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of my concern is the traffic. And the fact that that is on a corner there and if bus traffic is exiting and entering along that street, there's a curve right there. And it sounds a little dangerous to me to have an egress there. That's my concern.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Cohen? Nothing?
Sir, come on, right up the mic.
My name's Jeff Daley. I live at 224 West Silver Street. I'm also concerned about the traffic. You know, that street's not made for any more heavier traffic than what's going through there, I think, with all the bus traffic. And right now with Berry being rebuilt in the afternoon, they've got cars backed up from that street all the way up to Silver Street where you can hardly even get past the firehouse at the beginning of school and at the end of the day. And is the city going to be prepared for the expenses of the utilities that it's going to take to supply that size of a job there? That's a major taxpayer is concerned because I'm sure we'll all bear the blunt at that cost. I'm against the project is what I'm getting to. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could answer any of those, I'd appreciate it.
Does the board have any comments?
Well, I'm not sure about the utility expenses, except that I was under the impression that the individual apartment dwellers and business owners would be handling their own utility expenses. I don't think the city's incurring, unless I've missed something, and I may have, but I don't think the city is incurring any ongoing expenses of that, Jeff.
Do we have a way to supply--
The utility infrastructure is already in place.
They're going to have to enlarge in the sewers? They're going to have to increase the amount of electric that's going up Broadway?
They are definitely-- yeah, you're correct. They do have to make some changes. And for example, with the sewer runoff, I know that they're taking that into consideration at the same time that we are going to be building a new fire station, which is just north of that. And both of those-- and the projects are going to be working together, which is great, and using the detention or retention, there's a specific--
Detention basin.
Detention basin, one is different than the other, for both of those projects, which is actually going to be on the other side of the street by-- or in Colonial Park, which we are also planning on using in our parks plan. It's not just going to be a place to keep runoff water. They're going to go ahead and make a pond out of it. So yes, they-- we have thought about that and there is a lot of infrastructure, as Mr. Ayler said, already in place and for the stuff that does need to change. When we looked at the numbers, because of the development that's going in, we actually kind of end up ahead of the game on the project overall, which is very positive.
Supplying electric?
For pretty much--
The capacity is there. And it's already in place. Yeah, it's all there.
And the economic benefit of this outweighs any costs that we will incur.
Do any of your jobs are going to deter from downtown Lebanon? Would it create problems with like the barrel house? Like downtown Lebanon, are concerned with moving your own business away from downtown?
I think that the businesses are encouraged by it. It's kind of the same reason, in the way I see it, that you have Home Depot and the Loews are always so close together and you think, how can that be? I think the Barrel House is going to actually benefit from additional restaurants right there. I think they will actually see a benefit. I don't believe they're concerned about that specifically. I have not spoken to the owners myself. I--
Yeah. Jeff?
From-- yeah, go ahead.
The entire vision for the area is to expand the downtown and make it more walkable, and that's the idea behind it, and that comes from our downtown plan.
Master plan.
Yeah, the master plan. And with that, of course, it's to-- if you get more people down there, the idea is you get more people down there and they're walking and they're, you know, it's an easy walk from 511 down into downtown, and those businesses actually benefit. The only feedback I've heard, and I haven't heard a lot of feedback, but the only feedback I've heard from other business owners is positive. And that's-- but I haven't taken a formal survey or anything of that nature. I'm just going by anecdotal.
And the other part of the master plan that came out of the master plan, which if you'll recall was-- did involve a lot of community input, was a desire to have more residents, more residential areas in the downtown area. It's hard to support additional restaurants if you don't have people living there. So many people who live all around Lebanon don't go out to eat in Lebanon. It's really frustrating. So hopefully this, more options will draw them down and more people living there, of course, they will be like, well, let's just go right there. It's across the street. Let's go this one, you know? So I think the hope, the research shows and the hope, and so hopefully this will come to play out like we believe, is that they will feed off of each other in a very positive way. I hear your concerns about not overdoing it as a city from a utility standpoint. I hear you about the traffic. And I do know that issues with the school traffic. I had a daughter at that school last year and I picked her up, I dropped her off, picked her up every single day. And I do know that at Berry School, the traffic is backed up all the way down the street, all the way up Silver, past the fire station, because people would block the fire station, which is beyond tacky. So I realize that the school traffic does back up.
I can see if they did the gated community, like you left it locked, like they have some communities where the fire and rescue have an opportunity to use that for a safety issue.
Right. They do-- they definitely do like to have more than one way in and out. Yeah.
Being able to come out with hundreds of people. That's really going to put a strain on that exit.
I can't see many people wanting to come out there.
It is not going to regulate in that regard. I mean, people--
I think they'll probably use Broadway much more.
They're going to use Broadway. I can't see them wanting to take on the buses.
If the car is in the back, when you have the back, it's closer.
Yeah, but I, you know, if-- I certainly wouldn't. I wouldn't want to take on school buses and all that waiting in line, and I think the majority of the traffic is going to use Broadway.
Especially, yeah, they'll quickly learn what times of the day the parents are picking their kids up.
So I think we need to point out, it was a significant part of the downtown master plan was a traffic study that was done around that specific part of the city at different times of the day to understand what's the traffic pattern relative to different periods of the day, with the school in session, school not in session? What's the normal backup time at the stoplights there at-- right where the school is near Broad, where Barrel House is located? And, you know, the studies gave us significant amounts of information to be able to put this plan together. We wouldn't do that if we thought it was going to be congestive, right? Or we wouldn't condone it. That wouldn't be the-- but so I think we did, as a city, do the right due diligence when it comes to studying, well, what is the traffic behavior right now? What will it be if we add X number of locations, right, to that? So-- And to speak to your Barrel House question, Jeff, they actually hosted one of our public forums. They did. And said they're looking forward to additional businesses around them.
I can see Barrel House. Have you got docks down?
Well, I think for the most part, they all-- If you come to one, if you're drawing, people say, hey, I didn't know that was there. I didn't know this was there. And I think it encourages, most of the businesses that I've spoken to are encouraged by it. And a question has arisen, is this going to add more stress on our schools? And I think Mr. Cohen himself was a little surprised that a lot of empty nesters are acquiring, where initially, I think, our vision was the millennials, if that's the right term. I don't know what the current term is. And it's more, I mean, I have friends who's-- they're friends, but they're my friends' parents that are asking about this place, so I don't see that really. They're certainly going to put a burden on our school system.
Oh, we're going to put--
So, you know, I-- this is not really, I don't see a bunch of school-aged kids living in this complex, just based on what we've been talking about, so.
If it's helpful, I can address some of these specifically, because I have appeared before at this council many times, and I've been to the public hearings and I was part of the master plan. And what we've designed here is something that was in specific response to the master plan, what the community of Lebanon said that they want. A person that spoke specifically in favor of the project is the owner of the Gold Land. He came to a city council meeting and he spoke in favor of the broadening. I know the folks across the street at Barrel House have spoken in favor of the project as well. So we've made a commitment to the community that we're bringing in merchants, that we will not compete with merchants in downtown. They're going to enhance what Lebanon already has, and we're looking for businesses. There's only going to be maybe free restaurants, and those restaurants are all going to complement, not compete with the restaurants that are already existing downtown. As far as the traffic concern, the reason we're spending money for the gate at the rear is the question that everybody asked. Nobody wants this to be a cut through. I am fairly certain that almost all of the traffic will go out this entrance, because it's a tree-lined boulevard, so a really, really attractive wide entrance with turn lanes and so on. And the back is just kind of overflowed in the event that there's something going on on Broadway to get out. But it will be gated, so, you know, people have to go through a car access system in order to use it. Some people use it, but I don't believe it's where most of the traffic is going to come in or go out. No guests can use that. The neighbors can use that, given people that get into the back are people that actually live there.
I want access to those power poles that are right on the south end of that property. All the power poles run right along the property line right behind the houses on Oakwood. And there's trees there, there are 25-foot tall trees and a hill and all that stuff. Who are they going to get access to those power poles?
Well, I know the utilities are all being put underground in that area, so the utilities will all be buried. I don't know if that includes the south property line, but everything on the east property line will be buried, and that's where the access is going to come from utilities. I've asked some great questions about utilities, and Mrs. Monroe commented on the regional detention plan. There's actually a regional detention plan that anticipates development to the north of us, as well as this property, as well as the fire property, so that all the detention and all sewer runoff goes into one pipe and is connected to a city detention system.
Because you're saying all the power that's going to go to the 10 properties on Oakwood are going to be transferred underground and off those power poles?
What I said is the power poles along Broadway are definitely going to be buried. I don't know what the plan is for the--
Well, that's all the power to those homes on Oakwood are powered off those power lines that run the property line behind the houses. And that property line borders the school property and city property or whatever it is, whoever owns that property.
What is your concern about power lines?
I'm just saying, it's how are you going to get access to the power line if there's a problem?
How?
If you don't put them underground.
Well, how do they access them now? There ain't nothing there.
There's nothing there. They can get over and move the cherry to get it right now.
Okay. I don't know if any of the utility department has an answer to that. I'm sure they've anticipated.
I'm sure they probably do. Unfortunately, they're not here right now. So a lot of the questions that people are asking are, they're good questions. Mr. Cohen here has done a lot of these projects before, and I think he'll be responsive to your questions. I would encourage people to continue to follow this project and ask questions. What we're talking about here during this public hearing is the very sort of discreet issue of whether or not to change the zoning. And frankly, the zone change to allow a project of this general type without necessarily getting into the weeds of the specifics, because at this point, these are largely concept plans. When the project goes in for final zoning approval, the planning commission will have to approve the site plan. Again, I would certainly encourage people to participate in that process and voice your concerns there. Or to call the city manager and ask him these specific questions if you have questions about power access or traffic pattern or access points. There has to be two access points from different roads in case there's an accident. And as the gentleman pointed out, you know, you need access for emergency crews. Yeah, you do. Fire and police, both would have to have it. And that's a requirement of our zoning regulations. So the specific questions or the questions that pertain to, you know, a particular person's situation, they're very good questions. I don't mean to shortcut anybody from asking whatever they want, but at this stage, it is, it's very much a, you know, you're looking at sort of broad concept plans or concept drawings and saying, you know, asking specific questions that I'm sure somebody has the answer to or somebody at least has a preliminary answer to. But again, we're just really talking about the zoning at this point, the appropriateness of the zoning.
I'm working very closely with the building department and utilities, and I'm happy to get the answer on the question of those utility lines to see whether those are in the area, what the access will be, and then I'm happy to follow up with you tomorrow. But I say, send you back.
I have a question about the proposed narrowing of Broadway.
Could you step up to the mic?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
My name's Marie Brown, and I live at 118 Canal Street. And the thing that I was concerned with was the narrowing of Broadway. Could you give us a little bit more information about that?
That's, I think they've called that, are you referring to the street diet?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah. So, yeah, I'll touch. So again, this goes back to the fact that there was a significant study done as a part of our downtown master plan around the traffic in that specific area of downtown. And what was the capacity that we needed to be able to manage to? Could we restrict and narrow the roadway and add parking and it not negatively affect in any significant way the traffic flow in that specific area? So that's how the concept of the traffic diet came about.
You're going to narrow Broadway?
No. We're going to reduce it to two lanes and it's going to have parking.
The thing that jumped out to me, and this might help clarify it, but Jeff, the thing that jumped out to me in that study, so Jeff is correct, there was a study done and it was really eye-opening, it was very intriguing to me. So one of the things that they showed through this research was that it, the way they want to modify the road, it's more of a modification of the traffic patterns, actually is safer and allows for just as much traffic to move. So currently, when you have two lanes going one way and two lanes going another way, but no turn lane, that middle, the closer to the middle of the two lanes either way, ends up turning, functioning as a de facto turn lane, because if you have to turn, you go to the left-hand lane and you stop and you put your blinker on and you're waiting there and you're not in a turn lane. You're in a lane of traffic, but that's where you have to stop to wait till it's clear so you can turn. So they're going to have a turn lane, which is actually going to be safer, so if you want to turn, you get out of the traffic, you get into the turn lane, and you stop and wait till it's clear so that you can turn. So that's going to actually improve traffic, because there will be a dedicated turn lane, so people don't have to stop in the middle of the road, and it allows for parking on the side. So I thought that was a really interesting, the most interesting thing that came out of that research study, in my opinion, was that. And we're still looking at that.
I also found it very interesting that North Broadway between Oakwood and, I think it was Monroe, has no more traffic than Warren Street.
And the state don't have to say so over that? It is a state ground? It is a state ground.
And they're involved.
Yeah, they're involved. But I mean, the traffic is really no different on Broadway than what you see on Warren Street that has the same design with the turn lane in it.
And I think the changes will also make it safer, and it's also, the thought is that it'll probably slow traffic down a smidge, which will be a nice thing, too. When traffic's slower, it's safer and it's quieter.
It's one thing I hear from the bus drivers all the time, of people flying around them and they're not going to be able to fly around them on a reduced road.
Right.
You got a right here, a left here, a center, a right here, by the front three apartments up there. You know, if you're--
I think it's important to note that--
I didn't hear all of that, but if, I don't know if there's any other--
If you have a center turn lane partially, it doesn't pass along--
In spots, in spots.
Yes, you do. So if you take away one complete lane on both sides, you're going to back traffic up, especially after school's get out. You know, by high school traffic.
I probably could, I believe we could probably get you a-- I believe we could probably get you a copy of that study if you would like to follow up with the city manager on that.
And I think the other thing is, this is specifically to basically change the zoning so this property can be--
Right.
Residential units can be put on this property. This is the very beginning. We're going to have lots of meetings, planning commission meetings, we're going to get more details into all these things. So you'll have lots of chances to show up and talk to everybody and get more information on it.
Well, I think we're realizing we need to go forward with progress and progress. I guess it's just some of that's common sense with everybody that's in the public here.
Well, I think the other thing is, we, as a board, we don't just make decisions. I mean, we actually, we've, we had studies that we go into these things, like, and we try to give as much information as possible, and a lot of feedback from the community as well, so.
And if you, if anybody here would like a copy of that study, give us your name after the meeting or email address, and we'd be happy-- after the meeting, or email address, and we'd be happy to get a copy of that to you.
I mean, I think it's good, I think it's a positive thing, that there's a dialogue or a discussion around these issues, because this is your community. And we actually, I think I can speak for everybody on the board in saying that we want participation, we want feedback. It is a participatory process. Mr. Cohen, I think, you know, when he approached the city, he had a pretty strong track record of putting up very desirable, very attractive developments in other communities. And, I mean, if he were a shifty sort of fly-by-night developer type, not that I'm, I'm not trying to cast dispersions at anybody, but Mr. Cohen's right here, okay? I mean, he's not shying away from answering any questions, or he's not trying to play hide the football in terms of what he's proposing, so.
And is there a track of asking why they didn't propose to put it on both sides for a short period, so they could put a center turn lane in for that specific project?
Sir, I honestly, it's an excellent question that I do not have the answer to, and I wouldn't want to speak to it. I know that there is, in any road project that we undertake, there is a substantial amount of engineering dollars spent on studies and trying to come up with a design that'll fit the needs of everybody involved. I don't have access to that currently, but certainly if you would like to leave your name with Mr. Burke, and with, you know, asking the city manager to call you and have a discussion, I'm sure the city manager would be happy to do that. We have a pinch hitter...
I don't want to change the policy for...
The thought was that they wanted to improve the traffic flow and make it safer. That's what drove the desire to do this study. And I think it's great to have the discussion. It is slightly separate from what this public hearing is about, although it's related. It is technically separate, but it's good. When we do look at a plan like this, we are going to talk about, you know, the road in front of it at the same time, because they go hand in hand. But, yeah, it's, this project did not drive the study on the road, that was happening anyway. It's just good timing, because it's kind of happening at the same time. The other thing that I think is nice about this project is it's going to do nothing but increase the property values of the properties that are around it. I know it's already increased the property values of some of the things just north of it.
So, do you want parking on Broadway?
I believe there will, the plan is to have some parking on Broadway.
I understand some of my question.
I want, it's something I would like everybody to keep in mind, is that a master plan has been set, and it's continuously, you know, we review these. And the master plan is how we keep our city vibrant, how we keep it healthy. We're basically going through things that help us execute that plan, and I can tell you, unless I'm mistaken, not a soul up here is an engineer. I don't, did I misspeak? No engineering degrees up here. We rely, right here, right now, the decision makers of the city rely on the studies that are put forth through these engineers. And we hire these people to help us do this master plan. If we just want Lebanon to die out, that we don't have a master plan, we don't do anything, and then nothing happens. You know, I've often said I miss the downtown I grew up in, I miss the Lebanon I grew up in, but if we were still there, we wouldn't have jobs that we have, we wouldn't have businesses that we have. So this master plan that's set in place, it's how we guide our future.
If you ever got here, if my mom went farther, they'd have made you some trouble with traffic.
Right, and that's why we rely on the engineers.
If you were to put, say, a center turn lane in, instead of maybe widen the road, you're not changing the flow of traffic, you know, really you're increasing the access to turn lane. Instead of the two second, they're letting on down road, and more, you could develop any new management.
But again, that's why we rely on these engineers and these studies to tell us. I don't, I mean, you know what my history is of this town, I drove the big red trucks. I can't draw out a map and tell you how many cars are going to fit on this kind of road. I'd like to think I can, but I can't. And that's why, I mean, I wouldn't begin to say I know the answer to this without having an engineer's plan in these studies. And where they may not make sense to everybody, that's why we have these people in place. That's why we hire these people, and we, you know. So, and as I'm saying, it's one of these that, we didn't just whip up this idea, it's part of the plan, and...
Yeah, and we've never ever dealt with roads every day, you know, driving every day, so we never, you know, general traffic lines are... I bet you're old enough to five years.
Right.
Jeff, I think also, with our downtown master plan, which was developed two and a half or so years ago, great deal of community involvement. And the message that city council was given from the community was that we want our downtown to be more walkable, more vibrant, we want to extend our downtown, and that's what this is a part of, is extending that downtown footprint, that walkable part of downtown. And one thing regarding traffic patterns, when you're trying to make a place walkable, is a four-lane road that has, you know, traffic in all four lanes could be at any time, is very difficult to cross. So it kind of is a barrier to keep, it divides your business section up, because people are not wanting to cross that much traffic with it moving at those speeds. And so, the studies have shown that it has a traffic calming effect, and makes it more desirable for people to cross from one side to the other. I, please?
Crosswalks, they don't stop.
Yes, yes, but I'm just saying that it's, I don't plan to be the person that, I mean, I'm not trying to pretend to be the person that knows all the hows and whys and all the psychology of it, but it does have that effect, and that's what the studies have shown.
So slightly slower, more beautiful and quieter...
More peaceful type atmosphere.
And more approachable. And I think that this is, we've had a couple of development things going on that have really helped, and this is going to be the next step in really helping to revitalize North Broadway, which was really something we needed to do. North Broadway was at a pivotal point and really needed to be kind of sent off in the right direction, and we needed to take a big step forward, and I think with this project, we're doing that.
Ryan, did you want to, I saw you raise your hand.
So, Ryan Tassif, 116 Mountain Street. I can't speak to most of this. I would say, as someone that comes regularly to the council meetings, I'm sure Mr. Burke has made a note of this, and when Scott Brunka comes back, it would be the second Tuesday of next month. I know it's an inconvenience, but if he came back and asked to speak at that time, I'm sure he'll have all kinds of information at that point, he's usually very good at that. Of course, that doesn't answer any questions now, but from my experience. The only thing I wanted to say is, you know, I have my own issues with other aspects of this, which have nothing to do with the zoning plan, so it came up about small businesses, and I just wanted to say, as an owner of a very small business on Mulberry Street, we don't have a lot of traffic in that area where I'm at, but I believe that, you know, additional businesses anywhere on Broadway or anywhere in the downtown area will ultimately bring more business to our place. Even though we also have a bar, and I'm sure some places there will have a bar, next door to us, a new place moved in that had a bar, and we saw an uptick in traffic. So, just strictly, I have nothing to know, know nothing about the traffic patterns, but just strictly from a small business point of view, I think it will actually help us in the Mulberry and the downtown core, even as a small business. That's the only thing I wanted to mention.
Thanks.
So, to summarize, this is something that the city has been working on for years now. It's something that's been driven by our local community. A lot of collaboration has gone into this project. As Ms. Monroe pointed out, the road diet is something that is not necessarily connected, it's just happening at the same time. The main, one of our main goals for the downtown area was to basically expand its walkability to increase the border size of that. We're working with the schools to create a landscape and parkway that'll take us, that'll basically open up that entire area. Bringing competition into the city, I think, is good. Bringing more places that people want to go is good. And then also adding over 100 units where people are going to be living and spending their money, and I think that all those things are things that are good for the city and that will drive us into the future. Does anybody else have anything to add? So, hearing nothing else, let's have a motion to...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Objection to closing the public hearing, hearing done. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you for everybody that came out and spoke. We look forward to seeing you and talking to you as this project moves forward. So, moving on to previous business, ordinance number 2019-083.
Oris number 2019-083 is an ordinance of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to 64.91 acres of property located at 3390 State Route 42, Parcels 122020004 and 121410010, from Rural Residential Planned Unit Development or R-R-P-U-D to Rural Residential Planned Unit Development or R-R-P-U-D.
Those seem to say the same thing.
They sure do. Let me grab the ordinance.
I've had a question about that, because it was that way earlier also.
When I was reading the slide, it's like...
It's already been approved before, with 19 months, no spile loss. Again, you have to go through the whole process.
Okay. So it's...
That's the difference, yeah. That's the difference, yeah.
Okay, I see your point, so...
I do see the point, but we're not... I think it's changing it from one to another.
The zoning itself's not changing, it's the lot size and density, it's the only thing changing.
Correct.
I think that every time...
So the zoning isn't changing, it's just the lots...
It's the same type of zoning, but with a PUD, I think every time you change one aspect of it...
You've got to go through this.
So the wording is correct. You know, it seems to be saying the wording is correct.
It's not redundant.
Yeah, that's a good question, though.
Can I have a motion?
Has he read the abstract yet?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay. This legislation will approve a zoning map amendment and PUD concept plan for 64.91 acres located on US Route 42 town property from R-R-P-U-D, Rural Residential Planned Unit Development, to R-R-P-U-D to reflect the change in lot density for this development as recommended by Planning Commission.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none. Mr. Bean?
Mr. Ayler?
Yeah, sorry.
Mrs. Monroe?
This is not an emergency, so we just need a motion for a first read.
Oh, I'm sorry, a first read.
It's previous business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. It is previous. Motion to adopt.
There we go.
Sorry, my bad.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, resolution number 2019-085.
Resolution number 2019-085 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation to coordinate bridge rehabilitation with Lebanon Countryside YMCA Trail Extension over Turtle Creek Union Overpass at Bypass
This legislation will authorize the city manager to enter into an ODOT-LPA agreement for the extension of the Lebanon Countryside YMCA Bike Trail South utilizing the East Turtle Creek Union Road Bridge over Bypass 48, which is being rehabilitated by ODOT in conjunction with the trail project. The bike trail extension project is receiving grant funding through OKI's CMAQ program.
Can I have a motion to adopt, please?
Motion, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Hey, Your Honor, just want to point out, this is going to connect the neighborhoods on the other side of Bypass 48 to our bike trail, which is an absolutely wonderful thing. I know this is something that many of us have looked forward to for some time, so that they have the ability to connect to the city without having to drive their car necessarily over into that area. So, this is really a big improvement to our overall ability to move about the city, and very excited about it, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to do this in conjunction with ODOT to make that bridge safe and more effective in combining that with the trail. So, outstanding, very good.
Yes, and like he said, we have been wanting to connect both sides of 48 for a long time, and it's sort of, it's all about the timing. So, this is great. Years and years ago, when we had the desire to make the connection, there wasn't even that bike park there. Now there's a bike park.
Yeah, I forgot to mention the bike park.
Which is incredible, and anything that brings people to that, which will help to maximize that, is fantastic. And anything that helps to connect more to our Y, because our Y is so amazing, we're so blessed to have that in our community, is fantastic. And the bike trail, that's something else, not to be redundant, came out of the master plan, is more bikeable, walkable, but also bikable. And so you can go farther on your bike safely, and go from one place to another. So it's, I'm super excited about it, it's good timing, and they're redoing the bridge anyway, so it's all about the time. Happy to see this happening.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll third that. This is something that I have talked to many constituents about, when are we going to connect these two parts of town? And I think this is very good for the city. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burke, please call and roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-086.
Oris number 2019-086 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of right-of-way for a section of Oak Street and declaring an emergency.
This legislation will authorize the vacation of a portion of the Oak Street right-of-way in the vicinity of Holbrook Drive, which is necessary to dedicate easements associated with the development of 750 Columbus Avenue as recommended by Planning Commission.
We'll be declaring this an emergency, so can I get a motion to adopt, please?
Correct. Motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Mr. Burke?
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-087.
Oris number 2019-087 is an ordinance of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to 8.75-plus acres of property located at 511 North Broadway, 525 North Broadway, and part of 501 North Water Street, parcel number 120642602012062770071, 12062770072, and 1206402001 from residential 1C or R-1C, neighborhood commercial NC and professional office PO, to mixed-use planned development or MUPUD.
This legislation will approve a zoning map amendment and PUD concept plan for 8.75 acres located at 511 North Broadway Avenue, 525 North Broadway Avenue, and part of 501 North Water Street to support the North Broadway Avenue Mixed Use Development Project as recommended by Planning Commission.
Can I get a motion for a first read, please?
Motion, Your Honor.
And a second.
Second.
We'll be seeing this at our next meeting. Moving on to number four, ordinance number 2019-088.
Oris number 2019-088, an ordinance revoking and rescinding sections 508.13 and 925.12 of the Lebanon Code of Codified Ordinances and amending and modifying sections 377.02E and 531.06A2B of the Lebanon Code of Codified Ordinances in order to comply with the requirements of House Bill 228 regarding the possession, handling, and use of firearms in declaring an emergency.
This legislation will revoke and rescind sections 508.13 and 925.12 of the Lebanon Code of Codified Ordinances and amend sections 377.02E and 531.02E. Code of Codified Ordinances, and amend sections 377.02E and 531.05A2B of the Lebanon Codified Ordinances to comply with Ohio House Bill 228 regarding the possession and use of firearms.
So this is also an emergency, so I would like a motion to adopt, please.
Motion, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Just point out that this is, again, just aligning our ordinances with the state. We can't have laws that exceed the requirements that the state would allow, so I think this is, it's definitely a good move on our part, so thank you, appreciate the guidance on that.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Moving on to discussion items, city manager's report or police chief report?
Thank you. The next meeting of city council will be a work session on Monday, November 4th at 7:00 PM.
Very good. Thank you. Any executive sessions?
No, Your Honor.
Marvelous. Mrs. Wyatt?
Nothing.
Do you have anything for us?
Mr. Ayler?
Nothing, Your Honor.
No.
Shoep?
I just want to say, and I'm preaching to the choir a little bit up here, but I saw a story on the news today about a family that was intimidated because they were black, and I unfortunately see this fairly, see issues like this in our community fairly regularly, which is completely ridiculous, and I just am, just was so annoyed by that. I think people that have a problem with other people need to get over it, and if they think they're better than someone else, guess what, they're not. If you, and I, I just wish, I was wishing for people to be more moral in this issue, but in so many others. When you see someone being unkind, to put it nicely, that is way beyond just being unkind, other people that even see a hint of that need to just stand up and tell them to knock it off, which hopefully in time will get those people to change their stupid ways, but in the meantime, will at least hopefully encourage the people, if we come alongside the people that are being picked on, for lack of a better term. From a very young age, I've always been particularly irritated when I see little hints of this going on, and even before my current situation, which is, you know, I have an interracial family, my own children are not white, and, but that doesn't matter, it's extremely annoying anyway, and I'm very disappointed, I love Lebanon, love Lebanon, really disappointed that we have this still present from time to time, which is, it's frankly, it's probably more often than time to time, and it's really, really disappointing, so I'm hoping that that will be completely eradicated from our community, because it has no place in Lebanon. Thank you.
I don't know if it's, if it's part of our, our current generation, but the, the idea of just pulling out a cell phone and, and videoing it and not getting involved, and when you see something not, not putting down certain situations, I find that also ridiculous, and if you see something, get involved, especially if someone is, is impending, impinging someone else's rights.
Or even if they're just being a total idiot.
Or they're being a complete idiot. Get involved and, and don't let that stuff happen. I mean, you're part of the issue if you don't.
Have your own opinions, but keep them to yourself.
Yeah. I feel like we could go on for a long time here. So, with that, thank you for joining us, and we will be back here in two weeks. This is the last, is this the last meeting before the election? Is that right?
Well, there's a work session.
We have a work session?
November 4th.
Okay. So, and we'll be pushing the, the next scheduled meeting to the Wednesday after the election, so-
It's Monday the 4th.
Or is it Monday the 4th?
This is the last meeting, I thought we were meeting on the 6th.
The 4th or the 6th?
It's it. I think it's Wednes, Wednesday, right?
Well, you thought the work session was on the 6th?
I think you're correct. I think you are correct that it's the 4th, or the 6th.
It is the, it is the 6th.
It's the 6th, it's the Wednesday.
So we do not have a meeting, I don't believe we have a meeting on the 4th.
That is correct.
So our next meeting will be on the 6th, and it'll be a work session, and go out and exercise your right to vote, so thank you so much for joining us, and we will see you then.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?